Your patients. Are you ready for me to start, David?
Yes.
Okay. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4 through 10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Esbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, June 10, 2025. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Wydell?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Done.
Here.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Jodri.
Here.
Mzon.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Vangetason.
Here.
Dantuno.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Can everyone please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on our nation and to God, who is the God of all creation.
The move the Board of Education acknowledged the death of Scott Nunn, Head Mechanic, Transportation Department, and expresses its deepest sympathy to his family and friends. Thank you. You may all be seated. Is there someone that would like to read the Code of Ethics when we have our meeting in two weeks?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to include the addendum?
Mzon motion.
Francisco will second.
Who was the first? Mzon was first, and Francisco is the second.
If there's no discussion, roll call, please. Roll call on the addendum.
Oh, sorry.
No rush.
Done?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Zapsen.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mzon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Vangetason?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution passes to add the addendum to certify, certificate staff as number nine.
Were there any questions on the minutes?
Minutes are not to you yet.
Okay.
So you can't have any questions to stuff that isn't good.
Um...
Your patience. Are you ready for me to start, David?
Yes.
All right, okay. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4 through 10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Esbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Wydell?
The Oldbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Done.
Here.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano. Jodri.
Here.
Mzone.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Venkatesan.
Here.
Dantuno.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, can everyone please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance. Move the Board of Education acknowledge the death of Scott Nun, head mechanic, Transportation Department, and expresses its deepest sympathy to his family and friends. Thank you, you may all be seated. Is there someone that would like to read the code of ethics when we have our meeting in two weeks?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to include the addendum?
Mzone motion.
Francisco will second.
Who is the first? Mzone was first, and Francisco is the second.
If there's no discussion, roll call, please. Roll call on the addendum.
Oh, sorry.
No rush.
Done?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano? Zapson? Jodri?
Yes.
Mzone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution passes to add the addendum to certify, certificate staff as number nine.
Were there any questions on the minutes?
Minutes are not to you yet.
Okay.
So you can't have any questions to stuff that isn't good.
Are we doing? Is my mic on, those of you in the back?
It's above my pagers.
Test, test.
So we're doing number five today, right? Four and five for recognition?
We're doing all the recognition.
All the recognitions?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it does say that, sorry, it's not highlighted as usual. Okay, can I have a motion on the recognition?
Mzone motion.
Jodri will second.
Would you like to start?
Dr. Hoker, can I have you, Cody the Dais, lead us in recognition of number one? Move the Board to recognize the Oldbridge Township Public Schools National Districts of Character, one of three in the nation, that Oldbridge Township Schools was selected as one of three districts in the nation for national districts of character, and the following schools were re-selected in 2025 National Schools of Character: Memorial Elementary School, Miller Elementary School, Sherawah Elementary School, Southwood Elementary School, and Oldbridge High School. I turn this over to Dr. Hoker, who is the champion of character education schools.
Thank you. It is my honor to acknowledge our district and the schools who have achieved state and national recognition as schools of character. Oldbridge is one of three districts in the country that has received this recognition, and it is the third time, and we will hold this recognition for 15 years straight. Character education, social-emotional learning, and concepts of core values that drive every aspect of what we do as educators have a profound impact on our students and the journey they have through our schools. I'm proud of the work that this district, our schools, and the greater community have done to ensure that these core concepts are in the foundation of everything that we do. It is critical that we continue to focus on our core values and set an example for our students, who are our future. This recognition is important because it acknowledges the continuation of the good work that's going on in our schools, but the process is where the real value comes in. The process ensures that we continually reevaluate where we are, where we need to be, and how we're going to get there. We have people here tonight who are strategic in collecting the data and putting together the significant details of the application that we go through, but the work to achieve this recognition comes from all of the stakeholders in the school communities throughout our district. Congratulations to the schools of character who have maintained and continued this good work. I also would like Ms. Lori Coletti, who is, and this is a long title, it's NJASECD, and I'm going to tell you what that stands for, the New Jersey Alliance for Social, Emotional, and Character Development. Ms. Coletti is the Vice President and Co-Coordinator for the New Jersey School of Character Program. She has also been a cheerleader for this process and continues the good work with the organizations that run the programs, so I'm going to ask Ms. Coletti to come up and say a few words. Good evening. Again, my name is Lori Coletti, and as the Vice President of the New Jersey Alliance for Social, Emotional, and Character Development, and a Co-Coordinator of the New Jersey Schools of Character Program, it is my pleasure to recognize the outstanding efforts of the Oldbridge School District and the five schools of character here in the district. There are only three districts recognized as state and national districts of character across the nation. All three were in New Jersey. Oldbridge was one of them. Oldbridge has the most schools of character in New Jersey in 2025. The district application was exceptional and exemplified the good work and illustrated the extraordinary efforts of all the stakeholders to support good character and a positive atmosphere for the students of Oldbridge. All the Oldbridge schools designated as 2025 State and National Schools of Character continue to demonstrate an unparalleled dedication to good character through their sustained journey of outreach, integrity, ethical work, and parent involvement. At this time, the New Jersey Association for Social, Emotional, Character Development, it is the letter group, that's what we, the alliance congratulates Oldbridge for their 15 years of commitment to good character, as some of the schools have been recertified two and three times, and the district has been recertified three times. Kudos to all of you for creating schools where our children feel wanted and safe. Our parents are welcome, outreach to community is common, and our town is proud of this accomplishment. Thank you. We have many representatives here, and I'm going to ask them all to come up onto the stage so we can get a picture. We have members of Instructional Council that should come on up because they were integral in the district application.
I knew we got the certification, but to be one of three schools in the country is pretty impressive, so, good job, Oldbridge.
Okay. Ms. Kenny and Ms. Pansini, can I have you both at the dais, please? You are going to have to come over here, maybe, maybe stand in front of mom so you can be seen. Okay. Yeah, come on up, Stella, come on. All right. Move the Board to recognize Colleen Kenny, interventionist, and Emma Pansini, second grade student at Grissom Elementary School, for their outstanding commitment to researching sea turtle organizations as part of a service learning project. Their efforts included creating educational posters, selling bracelets and stickers, delivering weekly announcements, and presenting their discoveries to the entire school. Their hard work culminated in raising $1,000 for the sea turtle recovery at the Turtleback Zoo, showcasing their passion and dedication to making a difference. I think there's, because it's, that's in promising practice, we'll do that later. Okay, all right, so I have a wonderful certificate for Ms. Kenny.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything about the project?
First, I would like to thank Emma Pansini for coming to me when she was in first grade. So this was a year-long project that her and I created, and she was so excited to learn about sea turtles. So the teacher and me said, we're going to make this a project-based learning experience, and we incorporated science, and math, and social studies, and reading, and her and I just conquered the entire school and got everyone excited about the project. She's such a leader, and I'm so proud of her, and next year, I think we're going to save the manatees. So congratulations to Emma, very proud of her.
Emma, come on over. I'm so glad that you're not shellfish. Get it?
Thank you so much.
Well, we'll come back. Yeah, we'll go out of order, so we'll just go out of order. Yes?
I just want to point out that this program also received a promising practice award from Character.org, and is on the agenda for next week.
Yes.
For recognition for that.
So you're going to come back up again next week, okay? Two weeks, the 24th. All right. So nice to see Ms. Kenny's family with her. Little fun fact, her sister, who was athletic director up in North Jersey, lived right across from me when we went to college together, so haven't, how many years has it been? I don't know. All right, just when we graduated college together, only 10 years ago. All right. Number three. Move the Board to recognize Madison Gunch. Is Madison here? Come on over. Madison, can you stand right there? Good. Madison is fourth grade teacher at McDivitt School, and as a co-winner of the Partnership for the Drug-Free New Jersey Art Contest, Fun Things to Do Instead of Doing Drugs, more than 2,200 entries were received across New Jersey. Madison's art will be printed on bookmarks and distributed to all fourth grade students around this, throughout the state. So wonderful, congratulations. Would you guys like to say anything?
I'm so proud of Madison. I have wonderful, excellent art students at McDivitt, and Madison is one of the best, the better, the best of the best. Just the perfect little art student. She took the assignment, which was Fun Things to Do Instead of Drugs, and she made a beautiful garden picture. Maybe she wants to tell us something about what she, what she did, what she designed. I wish we had a picture that I could show you, it was just beautiful. And it's on the back? Okay. So it says, let your garden grow with flowers, not with drugs, and she talked about gardening with her grandmother, and that she loved that, and so they loved it too, because she's one of the winners on a bookmark that's going to be distributed to over a thousand, a couple thousand people throughout the state of New Jersey, all fourth graders, matter of fact. So we can't wait till we get that. Thank you.
I'm going to hold that right there, and maybe the TV crew can zoom in on that, so at home they can see it. All right, congratulations, Madison, we have to have you have a picture over here.
I'm going to take over while they do the pictures. Move the Board to recognize Joseph Lanzafama, Oldbridge High School Senior, for his outstanding service as Oldbridge Board of Education Student Representative for the 2024-2025 school year. His dedication enhances awareness and fosters a strong connection between the students, the school, and our community. So, Mr. Lanzafama, we'd like to thank you, and we have an envelope for you.
Great job, Joseph, you were wonderful throughout the year, very articulate, demonstrated great leadership for the school year, and I know you're going to do wonderful things at TCNJ next year, so congratulations to you.
And, continue. The Board would also like to recognize, oops, sorry, we'd also like to recognize Stephen Jajuski, Susan Walsh, and the students working the video and media production during the 2024-2025 school year for the exceptional dedication.
Can you guys just go left, yeah?
Dedication and commitment, live streaming and recording the Oldbridge Board of Education meetings each month. Your meticulous efforts ensuring that our discussions and decisions are accessible to the public in real time, fostering transparency and engagement. Thank you for your, being an integral part of this program. Thank you, Skylar, Raphael, Kayla, Erin, Alexandria, and Rivka. Thank you very much. Thank you, the Board just signed thank you cards, you know, for the students, for their time. Any other discussion on any of the recognition?
Madam President?
Yes?
I just want to take a moment to express my gratitude to Dr. Hoker for many years of working with all the principals and all the educators in this wonderful district to make this district a national school of character. It's an extraordinary feat, and it speaks volumes about our community. And, you know, I've been involved with the Board of Ed for 15 years, since the inception of the Schools of Character program, and I can tell you unequivocally that it's made a difference in our community, so I want to sincerely thank Dr. Hoker, all the principals. The principals played a tremendous role because they were given the responsibility at the school level to make sure it was done, to the counselors, to every teacher, everyone made a concerted effort to better this district through character education. As we know, there's six pillars of character ed, and each of those pillars have been instilled in our students, and it makes Oldbridge a better place. So from the bottom of my heart, Dr. Hoker, all the principals that are here tonight, all the educators who participated, the councils, everyone, the students, the parents, thank you, because it's made Oldbridge a better place. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Done.
Absolutely, yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano? He's absent. Jodri?
Yes.
Mzone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
And Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five for recognition passes, congratulations to all.
Any discussion on items number six through eight? Seeing none? Any superintendents report tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Any correspondents?
Yes, two pieces of correspondence. Okay. First correspondence is from Andrew Lewis, OBEA President. David, please read the following during the BOE Agenda Session on June 10th, 2025. I am writing to express my deep disappointment and frustration with the proposed revisions to Policy 0167, Public Participation in Board Meetings. It is disheartening to see yet another attempt to diminish the role and voice of the public in your meetings. Over time, we have already witnessed a series of steps that weaken transparency and accessibility. First, the Board stopped recording committee meetings, meetings where crucial conversations take place. Then, a longstanding practice of posting meeting agendas on Fridays was abandoned. Instead, agendas are now posted late Monday afternoon, significantly limiting the public's time to review and prepare informed input. Now, with the proposed changes to Policy 0167, the Board is attempting to further restrict public comment during meetings. The continued erosion of public participation is unacceptable. The community deserves more access to the decision-making process, not less. Public schools are meant to serve the public, and that includes respecting the voices of students, families, staff, and taxpayers. We should be striving to improve community engagement and transparency year after year, not watching them deteriorate. I urge you to reconsider these proposed changes and instead take meaningful steps to restore and strengthen public involvement in board business. Respectfully, Andrew Lewis, President, Oldbridge Education Association. Okay. Second correspondence is from Kelly Ellis Foster, Oldbridge resident. Mr. Wydell, I respectfully request that this letter be read at the Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, Oldbridge Board of Education meeting. I am writing to urge the Board of Education to preserve the current policy providing five minutes for public comment during board meetings. The proposal to reduce this time to three minutes is not only unnecessary, it undermines the principles of transparency, accountability, and representative governance that this Board claims to uphold. When citizens came before this Board to speak, they are not pontifying, pontificating emotions as Mr. Giordano unfortunately characterized in the last meeting. They are real voices, often coming from parents, students, and concerned residents, many of whom are speaking out precisely because an issue is emotional. It deeply matters to them. I believe that emotions are not flawed in civic discourse. It is evidence of care, of connection, and of a desire to participate meaningfully. Showing emotion is not something that should be put, should be put to shame, it's a vital part of our shared humanity, and in times like these, we need more humanity, not less. Public comment is not supposed to be a moment of convenience for Board members, it is meant to be a moment of accountability. That accountability cannot be effectively served in a rushed three-minute window that limits complex thoughts, lived experiences, and heartfelt appeal. lived experiences, and heartfelt appeals. It is not your job to decide whose speech is worthy, appropriate, or succinct enough. It is your duty to listen to all of it. The legacy of this Board of Education is one of inclusion and respect. Historically, every voice was allowed to be heard, regardless of the topic, the speaker's views, or how emotional they were. During the most difficult periods, frustration over COVID protocols and remote learning, school closures, staff reallocations and reductions, concerns about student safety, after-school shootings, and debates over budget cuts, the board stood firm in allowing the public to speak. That legacy has spanned different board members and shifting perspectives, yet one constant remained, the public had the right to be heard. This board has consistently emphasized the importance of transparency and public engagement. You have encouraged community members to attend meetings, to speak up, to share concerns. To now limit the time allowed for those comments is not just a contradiction to the words you speak, it is hypocritical. You will be judged not just by your words, but by your actions. If you say you want input but reduce the opportunity for it, your message becomes clear. You want public input only on your terms. I urge you to reject the reduction in the time the public is allowed to share their views and reaffirm your commitment to transparency, civic engagement, and the First Amendment by maintaining the five-minute comment period. It's a small but vital act of respect for the people you serve and a continuation of the values the Olbridge Board of Education has long stood for. Sincerely, Kelly Ellis Foster, Olbridge resident. That concludes correspondence.
Thank you. I don't have any committee reports for tonight, so. All right, do we? We don't have any committee reports. All right. So hearing of residents on agenda items only?
Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Ray Kama Wicks. First, before I start, express my sympathy and condolences to Scott, Ned, his family, his wife, and his kids. In regards to the policy for trying to reduce the speaking part for public portion, because in general, we have two portions that open like now and then later on, we have another one. Trying to figure out if the three minutes is limited to all together, one speaker per meeting, or if it's broken down. And the same thing comes to when emails are sent in correspondence. So Waddell, if there's like a time limit when he reads as well. If, I know we're not supposed to do QA. But in regards to keeping it as to three or five minutes, depending on the topic, some equate to more time need to be spent versus three minutes, which is something in regards to like a calendar. If you're just talking about the calendar, I can see it being three minutes. But when we start talking about the superintendent search or we're talking about in regards to the consolidation and redistricting of the town, I do know it's gonna cause a lot of motions. Five minutes maybe need to be spent for that portion. And I do know a lot of this is being conducted in order to reduce outside speakers of coming and taking up our time as residents. So I do understand that portion as well. In regards to the superintendent, which I saw somewhere on the agenda for tonight, in regards to the process of when it's being done, are the candidates that are chosen to be looked at, are they shared with the public? Or is it only the final candidates or the final superintendent choice? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close the public portion for the agenda items. Yeah, go ahead.
So on the, on the policy, it's three minutes for every public speaker in each section. It's not three minutes aggregate, it's three minutes anytime everybody gets to the microphone. And that applies to Mr. Waddell in his dramatic ratings as well.
You're so dramatic.
And on the, on the superintendent search, it's two searches. The interim posting has been out. That will be vetted at the board level and the public will be brought into it later in the process. And the other process really hasn't gotten going yet, but the public will be very much involved in that.
As far as the timing, if we have an issue that we think is gonna have more speakers, people need more time, such as the redistricting and things like that, we as a board can elect for that meeting to up the time limit, right?
Yeah, you could choose to do that. There are a lot of ways to look at it. If you've got 150 people at the microphone, you might make a different decision. But yes, your bylaws are yours.
Any other questions on that part?
I'll just add, when you have some of those bigger topics, such as the superintendent search, there will be community stakeholder meetings that are gonna have where you'll have a chance to speak. And those are not necessarily run at like a board level. So we want to hear, those meetings will be, you know, eventually shared when we have those set. And we're still going through those processes. But obviously, we want, and the board, I'm speaking for the board, they want your input and such a major decision that they have to take on. So those meetings will come at a later date. We encourage and will want your participation without a time limit, so.
Madam President? I just want to share with the public that the board did give this a lot of consideration, this policy, and there was a lot of debate and there was discussion very intimately. But the board, I believe in my eyes, believe that there are two opportunities for the public to speak, up to six minutes, three minutes at each period, you know, whether it's for the agenda items and then anything that has to do with school issues. So that's six minutes. And plus, the board can suspend our policy during any type of larger conversation that the public wants to have. So there are avenues. And I think what the consensus was is that, you know, we're very sensitive to people coming from outside our community, telling us what we need to do and how we should do it. And there's no checks and balance here. And we discussed, can we ask for a driver's license? Can we ask for different things to determine if they're part of our community? So it was one of those things where, you know, the board gave a consideration. I'm not sure where the vote's going to be. But I felt that, you know, personally, that three minutes at the front, three minutes in the rear, and if it's a larger discussion that involves something that's major, the board does have the ability to suspend its bylaws to allow a five-minute or a longer conversation. So I just wanted to give some insight on the conversations. Kelly Ellis Foster is a dear friend of mine. I've served with her for many, many years and I value her opinion. But sometimes, you know, there's differing opinions out there and the board's gonna make that decision. But in no way are we trying to limit the voice or the participation of the public. There's so many different avenues for the public to participate, whether it's emails to the board, whether it's committee meetings, it's participating in meetings through each of the windows of opportunity to speak. And if it's a larger matter, we will suspend our bylaws. I'm sure that the board would consider that when the time comes. But there were reasons why we decided to give this policy consideration. And we're very sensitive to outsiders coming into our district, telling us what we should do and not do. So that's just my opinion. I'm not speaking for my colleagues on the board. But I just wanted to give some insight of my rationale on why I'm going to support the policy change.
I have a comment.
I realize that that's gonna be part of like discussion for policy. So should we move to that part or just keep going? It's on the same thing? So if no one objects, I'm gonna actually just open up the discussion for the policy part of the meeting. Because then we're in the right spot. Go ahead, Joe. Discussion, we're now on the, we're now, yeah. It was literally just turning that part.
Wow, that was, that was like a tease. Just to remind the public that the committee meetings are the place to, it's a nice intimate setting to voice your opinions, that it's not timed, they typically end in the conference room. So as much as some people are disheartened about the three-minute limit at the podium, the committee meetings are a great forum to speak and bring up your concerns. It's not timed, no one's judging. We don't get that much of a participation, but maybe this is maybe a little bit of an edge to get you to get there because it's a great place to, to share your thoughts. Unlimited time limit.
Any other discussion? And the nice thing about the committee meetings is then there's more of a chance of a conversation instead of things one-sided. I go back and forth on the timing things. But like Rich said, it is unfortunately geared more towards people outside of our thing. As you guys know, we've said, most of us have said, you know, we're accessible at all times, reach out, so let's have an email, phone call. You know, you want to meet for coffee? Most of us are gonna say, sure, no problem. And we'd love to hear you out. And I'd love to hear your opinions before it comes time to voting, not just at the meeting, you know, in five minutes before, in between everybody else, you know, right before the voting. So that's where that came from. Any other policy discussion?
So I'll chime in real quick. So I think there's a lot of different ways to look at it. I am a firm believer in free speech. I am one of those people who's constantly saying, come out to the meeting, we want to hear you, email us. You know, I post on my Facebook page, come, this is what we're talking about. So I want to hear from as many people as possible. I actually think it might encourage people to get up and speak if the time is a little bit shorter. We might actually get somebody who comes and says, oh, my goodness, the line is so long. This is, you know, five minutes for each person, I'm never gonna make it, I've gotta get home. We might actually get to hear from more people if the meeting moves along a little bit. I think three minutes is a sufficient amount of time to be able to say what you, what you want to say. And then just going along with what my fellow board members have said, I agree with, with all of them, Jay, that's a great point about committees. So again, just a little insight into how I'm, you know, kind of looking at it.
Just another thought. I don't think Olbridge residents need to be penalized just because outside people are coming in and talking for five minutes. I don't think that's a good rationale. Rather, the rationale, really, the reason should be, let's save the time for, you know, moving things forward and be more precise and crisp and hit the points in three minutes. That way, we can spend the time, you know, equally and largely for all the discussions that we need to make. That would help us. And obviously, I agree with all the other members such that we can suspend the policy in critical situations where, you know, we have to hear more, you know, from everyone to back to five minutes or more. Thank you.
Can I ask a legal question, Mr. Parton? If you suspend the policy, are you suspending any time limit?
The board would make that decision. They could, they could suspend it. They could suspend the three-minute restriction and make it five for a particular purpose, for a particular meeting.
Any other discussion on that topic? So we've got two weeks to think that one over. For curriculum professional development, can I have a motion on items 1 through 4, please?
Ms. Owen, motion.
Slade, a second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry. Giordano is absent. Jojri.
Yes.
Mazzone.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski. Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Dan Tuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 4 for curriculum professional development passes.
Any discussion on items number 5 through 8? Hearing none. Moving over to finance. Items 1 through 4 on finance, can I have a motion, please?
Then we'll make a motion, Madam President, separating number 2.
Jojri will second.
Are we separating for discussion or for voting?
On both purposes, Madam President.
Okay, so separation with number 2 for voting and discussion by Dunn. They had the motion by Jojri correct and the second by Dunn?
Motion by Dunn, second by Jojri.
Oh, the other way around. Dunn, second by Jojri. Okay.
All right, so any discussion on items 1, 3, and 4? Can we have a roll call on items 1, 3, and 4?
Okay, Jojri.
Yes.
Mazzone.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano is absent. Dan Tuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1, 3, and 4 for finance passes.
Discussion on item number 2. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, Madam President. I do recognize that the Board of Education's Transportation Division requires facilities to be able to perform the maintenance of our buses fleet. It's very important. I understand this resolution or this agreement is going to allow us to rent space from the township of Olbridge for a period of 12 months for approximately $36,000 per year plus. And at this point, I believe it's in our best interest to do so. So I'm going to support this initiative. However, I'm very sensitive to shared services in this town. And I understand that, you know, we're going to reevaluate our position on all shared services. And I want to thank David Waddell for providing all the information so the board became educated on what we receive and what we pay. And this is gonna be a larger narrative, it's gonna be a larger discussion in the future because shared services should be what it says, shared services, and not one-sided. So with this particular agreement for it, I'm gonna vote yes based upon the need for having our Transportation Division to have the facilities to maintain our buses.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Jojri.
Yes.
Mazzone.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano is absent. Dan Tuno.
Yes.
Resolution number 2 for finance passes.
Any discussion on items numbers, item number, sorry, 5 through 18? 30? 18 and 30 sound together. Sure, are you sure it's 30? 24. Where are you getting, six more?
I have a question on item number 13. If Mr. Waddell, you can clarify on that. Item number 13.
So, so the board's, the board's annual threshold for bidding is $44,000. We often have workers' comp cases where there's settlements involved. So whenever there's a settlement under that $44,000, I'm authorized to essentially effective the settlement sign-off on it without board approval. Anything over that does have to come to, to board business for approval, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Waddell, just to piggyback on that, item 13, workers' comp. Are we self-insured up to a certain point with workers' comp?
I don't know the specific answer to that. We are, we are funded with NJSIG for our workers' compensation. I don't know the specific amount on, on the case, but I could get that information for you.
Thank you. We could also call a deductible in some cases. Thank you.
Any more discussion on finance up to number 24? We'll move on. Athletics, any discussion on items 1 and 2? Seeing none, okay. Non-certificated personnel, items 1 and 2. Can I have a motion?
Dunn will make a motion, Madam President.
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay, we missed a box here. So I'm gonna go with Jojri.
Yes.
Actually, do we have it? Did we just have a motion, are you saying?
Yeah, for 1 and 2, because it says, there's no box.
Who was the motions?
Dunn and Francisco.
Francisco with the second. Okay. I got a backup box, separate sheet. Mazzone.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano is absent. Dan Tuno.
Yes.
Okay, resolutions 1 through 2 for non-certified personnel office passes.
Any discussion on items number 3 through 5? Okay. Any discussion on non-certificated personnel operational, items 1 through 4?
Just a quick, I mean, those numbers will be filled in next week?
Yes.
Or there's no leave of absence. Can't go anywhere. Non-certificated personnel other, items 1 through 3, can I have a motion, please?
Francisco will move.
Mazzone will second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry, I was late. Hold on. Francisco. And Mazzone.
Yep.
Do you want to just do the administrative correction on that one, Mr. Waddell?
Yes, there is an administrative correction on item number 1. It should state July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2029. So we are changing the 20th to the 30th. And that's what I was making sure. Okay, Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano is absent. Jojri.
Yes.
Mazzone.
Yes.
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three for non-certified personnel other carries.
Any discussions on items number four through seven? Non-certificated personnel other.
Yeah, so the numbers there.
Page number 23.
The numbers there should be four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So they're a little funky.
Okay. Any discussion on the rest of that topic, let's put it that way. All right. So certified personnel, items one through eight, can I have a motion, please? One through nine?
It's one through nine with the addendum.
With the addendum. Ms. O'Moore, motion?
Wait. Jodri will second.
No box even?
No, I got a box here.
Which one?
You're on page 27.
Do I do that before the motion or after?
Eliminate, administratively removing three.
Okay, so we're administratively removing number three on certified personnel.
Wait, say that again?
Certified personnel.
Yeah.
We were supposed to vote on item number three tonight. We are removing that for the regular meeting to vote on.
Is there a reason?
We don't have the five votes.
Superintendent can remove it administratively, so it's removed.
You say that one more time.
The superintendent is removing from tonight's vote Resolution Number Three, and it's going to be on your regular action agenda on June 24.
So it's voting on, we need a motion for items one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
And nine.
And nine.
Can I ask a question about number seven, please?
Well, we need the motion first.
We had Ms. O'Moore and Jodri.
He didn't, I thought so.
Yep.
Okay, sorry. All right, so now you can ask your question.
Okay. For number seven, the ELA and math lead teachers, is this something that we have in place, or is this new? I don't remember.
We have had them, and then we haven't had them, and now we are putting them in again, and it's paid through grant funding.
Okay.
I also just want to point out that we have many new hires on the agenda, and you have your list. Okay, I didn't want you to forget. Before we got to that part, was there any other questions? Okay. So I'd like to welcome to the stage so that we can thank you for joining Old Bridge. What?
Did you wait for him yet, or no?
No. Are we not welcoming him? Wait, I'm.
She'd vote for him first.
You want him to hire? Well, I was going to have him here to hire, no. All right. Any other discussion? You'd think this was our first board meeting.
I was just going to say, guys, we really do know what we're doing.
It's summer, it's June. Can we have senioritis like the seniors? We're good. All right. Any other discussion before we invite these people up? All right. Can we have a roll call on items one through eight minus three?
One through, this is one, two, four, five through nine. Dunn?
Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano is absent.
Still.
Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. O'Moore?
Confused, but yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Cetason?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
All right.
Now we can welcome up.
Well, let me just say, resolutions one, two, four, five through nine carries.
Now can I have these people come up yet? All right. Alyssa Dennis, Amanda Domfrey, Stephanie DeFeo, Brooke Novak, Tara Pelosi, Cassandra Simmons, Miriam Zaki, Jennifer Rosoli, Lori Chalito, Amy Brennan, Sophia Delisandra, and Tara Pelosi. We have Tara twice. Are we hiring her twice?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to take, Scott's going to take our famous picture. Welcome to Old Bridge. I figured if I got your picture in before the vote, then we had to say yes. All right. Now that we've kerfluffle that enough. All right. Any discussion on items 10 through
Oh, Dan, we don't even know.
Any discussion?
I have 40, I believe.
Mine? All right.
Look, they're all leaving now.
That's because they're hired.
Not now.
All right. Non-certificated personnel transportation. Can I have a motion for item one?
Dunn will make a motion, Madam President.
And a second?
Ms. O'Moore, second.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
We're going to go with Jodri again?
And Jodri says yes.
Ms. O'Moore?
Yes.
Slade?
Yep.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Cetason?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano is absent. Dan Toono?
Yes.
All right, motion. Resolution number one for non-certified personnel transportation passes.
Okay. Items number, any discussion on item number two through five for transportation? Okay. Any discussion for transportation, items one through three? Okay. Supplies, equipment, and services, need a motion for items one through eight?
Ms. O'Moore, go ahead. Actually, I'll go first. Ms. O'Moore, motion?
All right, go ahead.
Dunn will second.
Thank you. Any discussions?
Yeah, I have a question. Okay, so numbers one, two, and three, I see we're doing asphalt and four. Geez, we're doing asphalt paving on three different schools. Mr. Wydell, do we have a list of after these schools are done, the list of the next phase?
I do have a list. And the reason why these schools are on this list is because any purchase that is over $44,000, there needs to be board approval. So there are some, I will go through the list right now of schools that are getting done. Some just fell under the $44,000 threshold. So they didn't need board approval. These amounts, because they were over $44,000 on their proposal, required board approval. So we have, Old Bridge High School is getting some, Sauk Middle School, Grissom School, Cooper School, Sandberg School, John Glenn School, Carl Sandberg again, Memorial School, Carpenter School, GNC, Grade Nine Center, and this might be a, John Glenn School, that might be a repeat. So we did have a list of initial, but those that were over 44 did need to get board approval. So I can share out the final list that, well, I wouldn't say final, because based on the proposals that we came in that have been advantageous to us, there still may be some room to do additional projects. But hopefully, we hope for a not bad winter. So we're just going to not rush into it right now. But there were some good projects that we have budgeted for, and once those are completed, we'll reevaluate some other areas.
Okay, thank you. I know wisdom way has been talked about for a while.
Wisdom way is the bane of my existence, and we're going to.
Going to pave it and be done?
We're going to try. We're going to try. It is a long stretch there. We got a very advantageous proposal on co-op, so we're going to try to get it done.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your dedication to that project. Any other discussion? That's, that's the stretch between Sandberg and Lombardi Field.
Yeah, on wisdom way, shouldn't we go on shared services with that one? Because the city really uses it. A lot of public goes right through there. They use it as an airfare.
It is technically our property.
I understand that.
We, I can have a conversation with the township, but we're trying to get these scheduled. So I'll have a conversation with them, but, you know, just to be sure, I still need the board approval because of the purchase. We can try to share that up later. But I want to get these, you know, we have one really window to do it, and it's in the summertime, so.
Right, right, right. Yeah, look into that one. Thank you.
An easy pass, we'll add easy pass to that one. Okay. Any other discussions on items one through eight?
I want to talk about item number eight. So this is to approve the new food vendor, right? So.
Yep.
Pomtonian?
Yeah. So the question I have is on page 37, at least the one I have on page 37, where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that Board of Education awards the contract to school food service management for 25, 26 years with an option for four one-year extensions." And then there's another food service company name. I'm a little bit confused there. What is that Pomtonian Food Service?
That's, that's the same company that.
That is the company who submitted a proposal.
Oh, that's the new company one. Okay, okay.
First sentence is the title of what they'll be doing.
Okay, okay, okay.
So.
Okay, I got it now. I was confused. I thought it was two companies, or it said management. Okay. Thank you.
And thank you to all the companies that submitted through the proposal for the process. It was a hard conversation and things like that.
What about the board members that had to eat the food? I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but I went home full for three days. So it was good food.
But I think, you know, we're excited to start this new relationship with Pomtonian and start with the new program for school lunches for September. Any other discussions before we do roll call?
Maybe if we can clarify to the public, what was the decision-making process, and how did we narrow down with this particular vendor?
Sure.
The food service committee chair or anybody from that committee?
So, in order for this process, this is a competitive contracting process. There is a formal criteria through statute for what needs to be followed. So essentially, just like any other publicly advertised contract, this solicitation goes out for a minimum of 20 days. At that point, all FSMCs, which stands for Food Service Management Company, can obtain proposals from our management company from the district to review and submit a proposal. So there was a pre-proposal conference in which all interested parties were able to visit multiple schools. We did at least one at each level, just to get the feel of the operation. They had the opportunity to go look at more if they wanted to. But again, myself and our consultant met with at least, I'm going to say it was double-digit companies that were interested in bidding on the services. So after that 20-day, there is a public, there was a public bid opening in which proposals were then received, opened, read aloud. After that, an evaluation team that was put together essentially reviews all the proposals that were submitted and can either make a decision or can decide to further evaluate. So at that first meeting we had, we reviewed the proposals, reviewed some criteria, and we narrowed down the proposals that were coming in. Then there was another meeting in which we had asked three different companies to then provide breakfast and lunch items to us for tasting for the board and to go over any Q and A and to get, to introduce the onsite proposed team that would be here. So after that event, we then meet again as a committee and to review and score based on the criteria in the RFP. 48 hours prior to tonight, at least 48 hours prior to tonight, so since Friday, on the website, there has been the Evaluation and Recommendation Report that was put together by myself in conjunction with Educate, who's our management consultant. And that was on the website, again, prior 48 hours prior to action. And then we are, that brings us to tonight, where we're going to potentially take the action. And once it is approved, if it is approved, we, I'm working potentially already to set up some meetings with that new company to come in and meet and introduce themselves to our food service workers. So pending approval tonight, I will be working back in the office to make sure that's all taken care of as soon as possible.
Thanks, Mr. Wydell.
Any other discussion?
We actually won them about you ladies, by the way. I said, we actually won the reps about you ladies. We actually won them. We did. We're like, they know their stuff, so you better come prepared. Oh, yeah.
I think we need another food tasting.
I agree.
So my favorite part, though, of serving on this committee was the fact that we got to sit down with, like Mr. Wydell said, the onsite team.
Yeah.
Because it was really important to us on the committee to meet the people who were going to be here daily, just to kind of, you know, get a feel for them, what their expectations are, their values. So, I mean, we enjoyed that part, and I think that's what really solidified the decision.
At the end, after the end of the meeting, yep.
At the end. All right.
And it's also just to highlight, the committee consists of, consisted of board members and principals and staff. So we got a feel for what they were looking for from other schools as well as us. It wasn't just board members, it was principals and staff as a part of the committee.
Took and brought in the stakeholders. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Giordano is absent, we'll go to Jodri.
Yes.
Ms. O'Moore?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Cetason?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
And Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through eight for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Any discussions on items nine through 18?
A quick question on number nine. Is there, was there a discussion about us raising the lunch and breakfast prices again for this year?
Yes, there was. This was prior to the RFP being generated. I had reached out to all nine board members.
I thought that was just for the RFP, though. I didn't think that that was for the next.
Yeah, but that, that price is what was used for the RFP. So the numbers that they provide in the RFP, such as their costs and their sales and everything, that's based on that number. So if you choose a number different, that kind of changes their entire financials for all people.
So we're just going to keep raising taxes? We're going to keep raising breakfast?
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Miscellaneous, items number one, I need a motion, please? Anyone want to make a motion?
Ms. O'Moore, motion.
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. O'Moore?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Van Cetason?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano is absent, yep, and Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolution one for miscellaneous passes.
Any discussion on items two through 14? Board secretary and board business, any discussion for items one and two with the calendar? All right, we're going to open the mic back up for hearing of the residents on any school district issue. Releasing her or pushing her towards? So after you speak, then just sign your name in the book.
Be serious, okay. Hi, I'm Sue Finnemore. I'm a delegate for the union for the food service company. I've met some of you. Some of you know me. Very quiet girl. I just wanted to, I just wanted to speak, obviously, for my union, and obviously, we're excited to get a new company in. and obviously, we're excited to get a new company in and to meet them. And we just wanted to, like the BA just said, we just wanted to schedule something soon because people are gonna go on vacation, they want to have that opening meeting to make sure that people are coming back. They want to be promised that job. So I know you obviously spoke to them that we have already, you know, employment of 70 people in the district and obviously, people just want to hear that you spoke for us, that we are gonna get those positions back in September. And obviously, they can weed through the herd at that point and we'll discuss then. And obviously, hire more people, hopefully. But we just wanted to hear that you hear that we know and we're excited.
Thank you.
That's it, it's not bad.
Anyone else would like to speak? We got more people. Merrick, you can speak first and then sign later if you want.
Hi, Merrick Moewix. So now you get me twice. But this one's real quick, just about the calendar. Because I don't know if a lot of people know the backend of it. So I did get invited with the Innovation Council in order to sit in on picking and selecting the calendar. It is very intensive, including bars and graphs, going back like five years, looking at absenteeism from kids to the teachers and so forth, as well as looking at every possible holiday to make sure everything was covered. So the mishap of looking at the Muslim calendars, that that might have been oversight, because my ex-husband is Muslim, wasn't realizing some do practice all day versus the evening. So that was apology maybe, not realizing it. But just to let nobody, everybody know, it is intense, included people from like staff, like everybody was there, including like sports. So it covered even something with, something I forgot about, the police, they have to do something. So all of that's taken into consideration when they make the calendars. Just to let you know, I do prefer the purple, because there's another part of it, knowing that the high school has to graduate on a Monday or Tuesday based on the policy. So if you do purple, they can finish school Monday, graduate Tuesday if you use red. That means they're graduating like on a Thursday, Friday, have to wait the whole weekend and then go back to graduate on Monday, Tuesday. And then the portion of taking in like single parents, parents that have kids in summer camp, you would have to wait to put your kids in. So just want to say thank you and kudos for the way the calendar is done.
Would you like additional information from Instructional Council on the calendars?
Yes.
Let me just add one thing before that. For the food service workers, mark June 12 on your calendar. I think we're trying to set a first meeting for June 12. Yep, and then another one potentially as well. So just, we're trying to get at least two in with you prior to last day of service, so, okay? We will, I will be sending out a flyer, I want to confirm the information and then a flyer will go to school. We also are gonna go to, send a flyer to our mark to disseminate out as well, so.
Hi, I'm Rachel O'Neil, I'm co-chair of Instructional Council. We sent the board, our IC, the preference from Instructional Council was the purple calendar and the rationale for that, that calendar has early dismissal on holidays, has a full spring break as requested by the board, graduation as the previous speaker mentioned is not an issue. And it doesn't create a difficult precedent to have in following years, they might not be able to meet. The religious holidays are excused as per the Department of Education and we have a link to those religious holidays on the rationale. The issue with the red calendar, June 24 would be the last day. We don't have consistent air conditioning in our elementary schools, so that could create an issue with half-days. It limits preparation for ESY and summer programs. It could interfere with college and post-graduation summer programs. And graduation would be June 28. And the issue with that is, it's a Tuesday. PNC may not be available on a Tuesday that late in the summer, they typically have concerts. And here's some of the benefits to having our graduation at PNC. There's no limit to tickets, so it can hold our students, students' families, et cetera, friends. It's a closed cover, so it's weather permitting. And it's also close, so proximity and busing is helpful. Also, having graduation that late could create staffing issues or that last day. Staff can now use sick days for childcare. And it also creates the problem, as I had said additionally, for creating a precedent that we might not be able to meet in following years. For instance, on the 2026, 27 calendar, DiVale is on November 8, which is a Sunday. The following year, 2027, it's on October 29, which is a Friday, which would mean the day would be pushed and so on. So that is the rationale. Any questions?
Thank you for sharing that. Any other public comment? We're gonna close the mic. Any old business from the board? Any new business from the board? Since we won't have our next meeting until after school ends, I would like to wish all the staff and students a great summer. You guys worked hard this year and, you know, it's appreciated. We hope you guys have a great summer break and we can see you in September. And congratulations to all the graduates. Anyone else?
No, same thing, congratulations, everybody, have a great summer and see you in September.
Okay. So, thank you. And yes, we did, with all the companies saying, you know, we like our, our food service staff and we want to keep them and things like that. So that was definitely a part of the conversation. Thank you for feeding our kids with smiling faces, so we appreciate that. So we, next week, we won't have a meeting because the middle schools are graduating, so our next, our regular meeting will be the 24th of June. We are going to an executive session, can I just have a motion for executive session?
Mazone will motion.
A second?
Venkatesan will second.
All in favor?
Oh, you gotta go in.
Go in. All right. Thank you very much to the public.